Are we ready? You're live. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Hurst Town Council's Planning Committee Meeting, thirty first of March. Very welcome. We have tonight, and I remind us and any members of the public that Sandhurst Town Council is not a local planning authority. We are a statutory consultee, and that means that the decisions we make tonight are recommendations only to Bracknell Forest Council. We do not decide whether something is going to be approved or refused. Our role is to make recent comments on the application if they're appropriate, and no comments, there are no material reasons. So with that introduction, I'll move us straight into the first item on the agenda, which is apologies for absence.
Just apologies from councillor Mrs Coppins this evening.
Councillor Mrs Coppins has noted. Any member interests? There is just from me that it's more for note than declaration of interest. There is an item about the cricket club, and whilst I'm not a member of the cricket club now, I was when it was first started, and I remember it well at that time. Minutes of the Planning Committee meeting to receive and confirm the minutes of the twenty seventh of January meeting, twenty fourth, and it should say February. There we are, look, we're getting on really well.
Oh, second notes if you like.
And who proposed that one? That was me and your second, councillor Hill. Lovely. Thank you very much.
Go now.
Do what's necessary.
You can give me some comments.
Does not matter, it's all done. Right. That's the due process done there. I'd like to draw your attention to the first application that we are required to consider. That is one Compton Close, or do they say Compton these days, close Sandhurst. And that is the proposed erection of a single-storey rear extension following demolition of the existing conservatory. Can't we understand? From anybody? Does anybody have any material reasons or any comments they wish to make on this one? Personally, from I can find no material reason. The extension isn't out of character with the area in that particular location, et cetera. And the trees in the area, there's a proper agricultural plan to look after them and things like that. So I'm not hearing any reasons why we should comment further. So I'm happy to propose no material objections or comments. Is that seconded? Sorry, councillor Widdes. Right? Okay. All those in favour? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Lovely. I'll move on then swiftly to twenty five treble zero seven six full, which is Seven Oak Tree Way, Sandhurst. And this proposal is the erection of a single-storey front extension with proposed part-single and part-two-story side and rear extensions. And again, if I may, having looked at the area, know the area quite well, it's keeping with the size and character of buildings in that area. It's not overly intrusive, et cetera, and I couldn't find myself a material reason. I'm happy to listen to any members' input as to why it should not go forward in that case.
Material's a matter existing by the look of things.
Doesn't it say that?
Well, I'm just looking at the design, for instance, the way that the tiling has been carried forward.
Yeah. That, sorry, that was what I
Looks like, I don't know if you noticed it, Dale, that it was proposed in twenty twenty, and we did, we were happy to I think it, I think it's just past its planning application date, does the re-planning application?
Oh, this, like happened to me, had to redo it before they could carry it.
Before it expired, that's the way I would see it.
But even then, as I say, I can't walk the any significant material reason why it shouldn't go ahead. And I'm happy to propose no material objection or comments. Councillor Hill, thank you. Is seconding that. Those in favour? Again, unanimous, thank you very much. We are moving on to twenty five treble oh eight seven, which is thirty to thirty-two Yorktown Road. And the proposal is to change a shop front, which is probably retrospective, because when you drive, when I drove fast on the way here, it already says chicken valley, but it is very similar to the previous.
Same style, isn't it?
Same style, et cetera. It's not intrusive, et cetera. So again, I can't see why it can't be approved. And so I'm happy to recommend no material objections or comments. Is that seconded?
Thank you.
Yes. There we are. And all those in favour? Thank you. Right, let's moving on then. We're on to twenty five treble zero eighty-eight, which is twenty-nine York Way. And the proposal is a proposed erection of part-first floor, part-second story, front and side extensions with rear-vay window following demolition of existing garage. And you can see from the evidence with the existing side drawings, and then the somewhat more clearer view of what they're intending to do. And again, nothing in that area sets this application aside.
Although there's a lot of the garage, there is ample parking.
The parking issue, it does meet our criteria. It meets all parking standards. So again, I'm content to move no material objection or comments. Is that seconded?
Yep.
Sorry, thank you. Seconding that. Lovely, all those in favour? Again, unanimous. Right. And we'll be swiftly on, as they say, Sandhurst Memorial Park, treble oh eight nine. The proposal is the extension to existing artificial cricket pitch. And they did get a, they did get a note from the highways. They wanted to make sure, and the highways comment was that all this was was slight increase in the size of the actual artificial pitch. There it is up there. And no transport impacts were assessed. So although it was assessed, there was no additional transport impact. And I'm happy, this was chairman, this was discussed, wasn't it, at Strategy and Policy last Thursday?
No, it would have been a leisure discussion.
Leisure.
Leisure, it was leisure.
Oh, no, no, it was discussed at Stratton. No, no, it was at leisure.
Yeah. Do I need to declare an interest being the vice chair of leisure?
No.
Okay.
No, no, otherwise, because I sit on the leisure committee as well. No, the decisions made there should not, should not cloud your judgement.
For our benefit.
That's right. Yeah, I'm happy to accept it.
Okay. I'm happy to move no comments or objections. Happy to second it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Lovely, that's councillor Mossom to second. All those in favour? So again, unanimous, thank you very much.
Darcy, I don't think we're live.
Sorry?
I was saying, don't think we're live.
It says live, that's the top. Yep, yeah, sorry.
I must have been at the wrong link.
You can wave at your family if you like.
Oh, yeah, it's caught up with me now.
It's caught up with you. Okay, lovely. We're going to move on then to treble oh nine five four, which is Seven Willow Way. And the proposal is proposed first-floor extension and part-garage conversion.
Now, I had a query of yours, one.
Sorry?
I had a query with this one.
Oh, query, let's examine.
If you do the floor plan of the proposed, Darcy, please. It's, I don't know, because I've looked at the scale. But because what they've done is they've taken some of the garage and made it into the study on the ground floor. Is the existing part of the garage wide enough for a car? That would be my question. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't see on the portal any referral of that to highways and trams. Could be scaled, because if that's the existing. Is that fifty percent? In other words, then, of
Was it a double garage?
Double garage, made into a single garage. It's a double into a single from what I can see from that.
Okay.
Given the, let's just make sure.
It has quite a wide driveway anyway, as it happens for
Yeah, there's plenty of road surface, but technically speaking, if you can't get a car in, can you still call it a garage?
Well.
That was just my, a query. Sorry, that was the kind
For a garage for storage. Well, the in terms of parking.
There's plenty of parking.
There's plenty of parking from, so there isn't an issue there. But I don't have any evidence.
Straight view would tell us, oh, yeah, it is a double garage.
Well, yes, I think they all are. But even with the existing, if you look at the existing one, and then you put the the other one, I don't think they changed the width of the carriage door as such at the front, if I'm
Yeah, so that's the proposed.
That's the proposed, which stays the same width as the, can you see?
Yeah.
That's the front, so I'm assuming they are still referring it to it as a garage, and therefore it's able to take now one
One car, don't you? Yeah, okay.
That was my only query. On the left, I would think will be for the wheelie bins, because it's interesting that it's actually cut off. It could have extended it and made it into a single garage door, instead they're retaining the double garage doors.
Okay. That was my only query.
Quite imaginative, I see.
The query, well, the query, yes. If it wasn't, it still doesn't breach our parking.
Yeah. Oh, no, I looked at the parking separately. No, I mean, yeah.
Funny point. So with no material reasons why we should consider refusal, I'm happy to propose no material objections. Points, is that seconded?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, councillor Hill has called out on that. All those in favour? Again, unanimous, thank you very much. And we're moving on at a reasonable rate here. This is, now, I don't know whether any of you felt a bit déjà vu-ish on this, but I did query on arrival with Darcy, our committee clerk, whether we'd done this one already.
Yeah, there was a previous planning application.
There was an application.
Was it an outline? Was it an outline, planning permission?
It was an outline, wait a minute, it was dated, no, it's in December. Okay, outline application was twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, but we, no, we approved in our minutes an application for a four-bed detached in December of last year. Let's have a look. Right?
Oh, I haven't got December, so this is a failure.
That said, if we're, if there was, I can't, I can't think there would have been any time lapses, any
Is there a change, as in?
There was not, can I just, all of that, we've done it. I have the minutes.
Was it three-bed, and now they're putting in a four?
Well, that would be a section seven-three, wouldn't it?
Is that why they've applied for a new planning application?
Could be. This was done on twenty-third of December, right? And application zero zero six nine six, land adjacent, the Russets, Hankum, the proposed erection of a detached two-story four-bed dwelling. So it was, so it's a four-bed, and it's still a four-bed. So I couldn't, I couldn't work out why this was. Now, that said, we had no material reasons or otherwise last time, and I couldn't see any Oh, the only difference I saw was in the layout of the area that they were claiming of the site, which showed the road, the whole of the road to be in the ownership of whoever. And I don't believe that.
That looks like illegal, that's why I thought.
And that's nothing to do with us, has to close the land and rights of access and all that.
I just wonder if there have been some material changes on the internal configuration that necess Is it a new planning application on? Yes, it must be.
Yes, it's got a whole new number, and it's been validating, except there's another fee that's been paid there. Yeah, the application. And so there's no change to the parking, it's exactly, the layout is exactly as the one
Interest around here, but now the garage has been demolished. It makes you realise it's quite a large plot.
There was, I believe, some queries on, because the patio out the back and the extent of the lawn, how big the patio at the back, and there were queries around that. But those weren't material refusal type queries.
In the local plan, well, in the olden days, let's put it that way.
Oh, right.
They had, for any new dwelling, they had to submit something about renewable energy. Now, does that now apply in the local plan, in the new local plan, which changed?
I'm not sure whether you're talking local plan or building regs.
No, local plan.
So the local plan still refers to biodiversity net gain, doesn't it? There's still policy. Oh, fifty-something, is it? Anyway, that refers to, so I have to assume that they are energy management today, that they're looking to consume X amount of their own smoke in each development.
That was my own query.
Okay. Yeah. Well, again, I did know, in the evidence as presented, there's no mention of any deficiency in that, either in the last one or this. So because for consistency, I'd like to suggest that that no material objection or comments. And the difference with this one, though, is last time we had quite a few resident comments. This time, they're, they're, no, I think they're concerned with the amount of traffic.
And that was it. So that, as we both know, it has been the subject of quite a lot of developments along that, in the Fox and Hounds public
There we are. That's been, yeah. So I'm happy to move no material objections or comments. Councillor Brossard, thank you. So all those favour? Again, unanimous, thank you. Right, next one on the agenda is double oh double one five two oh two Evenload Way. And the proposal here is erection of a ground floor, rear and side extension, as you can see. And next to the next-door property, there doesn't seem to be any size or character issues with this. Anybody got any concerns?
Which is quite a sympathetic and modest extension.
That was being a single story as opposed to a double story.
And objections from neighbours.
And it's not all flat roof, it's got some character to it. So I'm happy to move no material objection or comments seconded? Yeah, say it, councillor Widdeson, thank you very much. All those in favour? Again, thank you very much. And moving on to double oh one oh eight Three Ballintor Court, and proposed erection of a single-story side extension. And I actually found the layout of everything on one page quite helpful. Quite, it was quite clear and quite helpful that, in terms of where to look and so forth. So again, certainly not out of character with the area, and very nice area, in fact. Does anybody any material reasons why there should not be? Then I'll move the proposed, that no material objection or comments.
Seconded.
Okay, that's councillor Mossom. All those in favour? Again, unanimous, thank you very much indeed, folks. And finally, as they say, to double oh one one seven eight Braxham Hill Road. And this is another one of those not out of keeping in character. Opposition erection of a single rear extension and render finish to entire property.
There are also not out of keeping, there's a very large mix of different properties.
Yeah, and there are a couple of other rendered ones just up the road and so forth. So I, you know, I went in search of, is this going to stick out like a sore thumb? And, and I shouldn't say, there are other sore thumbs, but no, it wouldn't, because there's there's a couple of painted, yeah, but there's a couple that are painted brick. And there's one a bit further on than that, that's render as well, from looking. So I couldn't, whilst not a fan of render myself, that's not a material reason. Anybody got any specific points?
There's all sorts down that road, so yeah.
Sorry?
There's all sorts down that road.
Yeah, it's mixed, and you know, there's no bulk and massing issues that I can certain. Yep, and it's all in keeping. So I'm happy to, no material comments or objections. I'm happy to propose that. Is that seconded? Oh, I've got two, councillor Hill, I'm anticipating, there we are. All those in favour? Thank you, that is unanimous. And that is the last item on tonight's agenda. And thank you all for putting, yes, putting all that effort into investigating that. The next item on the agenda is the neighbourhood plan. And as I said previously, the public consultation has finished on that. We're now moving in to the consultation on the actual policies that have been derived from the consultation. And you can now see on the council's website, a draft neighbourhood plan, the statistics that go with it. And importantly, the areas that we're looking to classify as public green spaces. And since the Stratton Poll meeting, where I briefed similarly, people have said, how can we present areas that we think should be? And again, I've repeated that it's not just a question of saying, that bit there. Members making submissions on that need to identify it by name, but identify it by a clear map, showing outlines, and then, and I think it's section five in the new neighbourhood plan, outlines some of the criteria that would make it a green space. If those could be used, and then people need to write their evidence as to why they believe a piece of land should be a local green space. And the first adjudicators would be the working group. And if that gets through there, it then goes to the borough who look at it. And then it's finally adjudicated on with the whole of the policies by an inspector. We are consulting now with everybody via social media. We've got notice boards with everything, we've got our website established and so forth. So, and including landowners. And it's a specific consultation this time. The responses are, the response from us, tell us which of these policies in the document you either feel to be enhanced, or are there other policies that need to be put in place? And if you're going to recommend other policies, then you'll need to submit evidence with that. And that's where we're at. We'll take that up till the middle of May. I may go a bit over it. It's a flexible end date. And then at the same time, there are a number of other statutory bodies that we've gone out to, and we're waiting for their response back as well. uh bodies that we've gone out to and we're waiting for their response back as well. And I shall be uh, uh, tomorrow morning, uh, presenting the plan to schools uh and inviting schools to make their comments. Uh, so, uh, we are progressing. Uh, and hopefully, uh, we had a very positive meeting with the planning department at Bracknell Forest. We're getting uh excellent support from them. And uh, uh, we are working uh, uh, with them and with consultants. And we're looking forward to the end of this consultation and when we will finalize what we're putting to Bracknell Forest and to an inspector. And we look to be dealing that in the summer. Thank you, everybody. I'm sure that.
It's a massive undertaking, though, isn't it?
It's huge.
There is a lot of work.
It's, uh.
Uh, and the working group are working really hard and.
We had a very good meeting, in fact, with the adjacent councils and it's like all the valley countryside. We, we met with, we met, we met with, uh, Fincham Stid and, and he ate the evergreen with uh the Blackwater Valley people. Uh, uh, and uh we've got really positive support from them for what we're doing. So, looking forward to all that. Thank you, everybody. I declare the meeting. You can go too. Good.